Bartlett Committee, the whole meeting for August 18th, 2015. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Erns?
Here.
Cameron?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Daaney?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. First item we have on our agenda this evening is under Planning and Zoning Committee. Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two items this evening on Planning and Zoning. First one is Daniella's Bistro Special Use Liquor and Outdoor Seating. With that, I'll turn it over to Jim.
Thank you, Trustee Ranky. As you have seen this for the second time, it has gone, the first time it had gone to the Plan Commission, Daniella's is at the, as the Spin Doctor owner said, it's just next door to him at the corner of Railroad and, I'm sorry, Bartlett Avenue and Hickory Avenue. They are requesting a special use for serving the liquor in conjunction with the video gaming establishment and to create an outdoor seating area as depicted on this rendition and as shown on this site plan. The petitioner is going to, is asking for the liquor license to enable him to apply for the state gaming license. He will have an establishment that will serve, that will have five gaming stations and four additional seats. It's a small operation, it's a small space, that used to be the old station cleaners. There's parking on the site from the Cartland Building, and there's also parking in, in the, public parking in the, in the front of the building. Staff did recommend approval of this to the Plan Commission in conjunction with the video gaming facility and outdoor seating, subject to findings of fact and the conditions that they require, obtain all building permits, obtain their liquor license, obtain the village's video gaming license, maximize the outdoor seating to four, and only allow the outdoor seating identified on this particular site plan and fencing it as shown. And then the hours of operation would be 11, Sunday to Thursday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Friday, Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. The Plan Commission, her, took numerous testimony on this petition, and residents in the neighborhood to the north of it, and you can probably see that a little better on the, on the air photo, but residents in the north end of Hickory and right along to the north of the Spin Doctors in these general areas came out, spoke, many of them spoke against the petition, and as a result of that, when the Plan Commission voted, they failed to approve a positive recommendation. So it is here, in front of you, with the minutes of the Plan Commission, the petitioner is here, and as you've heard, you've heard from one additional person who was not at the Plan Commission, but expressed some of the same concerns.
Thank you. Jim, I read through the transcript very carefully, and one of my big questions is, has the petitioner amended their plan at all to reflect the comments of the residents?
No, he's sticking with his plan that he's shown you. It's a pretty basic layout and a pretty basic outdoor seating area. Primarily, and Peter's here, if you want to ask, he can answer it, but primarily, the internal, the seating is limited because he does not have the ability to really expand the bathrooms. If you go to more seating, you need separate bathrooms, and the space just doesn't accommodate it.
I noticed there was a distinction between the proposed hours of operation and the recommended hours of operation. Am I correct?
Yes. The liquor license allows you to obviously have a lot more oper, more use or hours of operation than what is intended. These are the hours that, that he provided us, and I don't know if there's any change to those. Yes, you, you want to?
Yeah, oh, absolutely, come on up.
(inaudible) 1572 Noel Crest Drive, Bartlett, Illinois. My wife and I have been, moved into Bartlett about three years ago, and it's been a dream of ours to open up an establishment here in Bartlett. Over the past year, since last October, we've been working with the Economic Development Committee, Tony, um, Tony Frayden. We've looked at just about every location in Bartlett to open up a restaurant. Our main goal here was to open up a restaurant and bar in Bartlett area. That's where my wife and I expertise are. After looking at numerous locations, we came across 300 Bartlett Avenue. Unfortunately, the space that's available in Bartlett Avenue is only 600 square feet. My wife and I have been working with the broker to actually purchase the property, but we're hoping to work with the city to see if we can actually get a liquor license and a gaming license before we actually purchase the property. We've talked to the broker, the medical center that's there, Alexium Brothers, right now, has not expressed to the owner or the landlord that they're going to renew their lease, the lease is, I believe, up in a year and a half. If that was the case, we'd be definitely interested in purchasing the property, hopefully turning that medical center into an actual restaurant. We've teamed up with one of the best chefs in Schaumburg area and the Chicagoland area. We've already, you know, hopefully that's what our main goal is, to build out that restaurant. The issue here is that 60% of all restaurants fail within the first three years. Unfortunately, gaming is a very good factor for restaurant owners. It helps pay the bills. I know a lot of people do not like gaming, I know a lot of people are for it and against it, but it does help businesses and bars and restaurants stay afloat. It pays the bills. After the July 9th meeting with the Development Committee and the people that were here from the town, I noticed that there's two things people usually fear. It's change and what they don't know. I have a feeling that the people that were up here didn't actually understand what we were trying to do. We're actually trying to purchase the building and prove it. The parking lot needs to be redone, it's pretty shabby, it's pretty bad, the outside could use an overhaul. We're hoping to come in and team up with the city and actually turn that into a nice little area in the downtown area. At this point, though, the only thing available is the little 600 square foot cleaners, so we're hoping to work with the city before we make a million dollar investment and find out you don't want us. Some of the people, Diane Roca, said that her daughter's going to be going to Columbia College, and she's terrified of walking by this, what kind of people are there. I don't think she understands. We're opening up a gaming cafe, it'll allow us, to give us a chance to showcase some of our food expertise. We're targeting women, 35 to 70, we're making it a place where your mom or your grandmother can go and be relaxed. A lot of people don't like going into dive bars and do a little bit gambling, or have a drink, or sit outside and have a cocktail. Mr. Butterny, if it was more of a restaurant and its primary business had video gaming, I would be less against this. Once again, I don't think he realizes our actual goal is to open a restaurant with the spaces available in Bartlett, this is the only one that fits our criteria. Mr. Vanderwater said, "You just can't go there with your buddies, there's not enough room." Ms. Troyke is worried about the children in the neighborhood and if a drunk person walks by her house. You know, I, it's kind of hard to say if it's a drunk person walking by her house, it's probably her neighbor. We're going to be that close to them, or, it's not that kind of a place where people are going to get, you know, knocked down drunk and stumbling home. It's more of a, "Come by, relax." Our main goal is to bring 25 to 30 women to the downtown area every day. Bringing more revenue in for the downtown area, they'll do shopping, they'll hang out. Mr. Price said he doesn't have a problem with the restaurant, he doesn't have a particularly problem with drinking or gambling per se, he believes gambling has certainly added some much needed revenue to the village, he just doesn't like the location. John Holmes, doesn't appear to be the kind of place that anyone can stop by and have a good conversation. He's worried if there's a dozen people outside, it's going to get noisy and chaotic. As you see from the plans, we only have four tables out there. Our main targeting demographic is women. There can't be 12 people outside making noise, there can only be four. And if there's four people inside, there's nobody outside. The hours of operation, we've also been hopefully working with the city, we've done some research, talking to people that are getting in and out of the train. I've talked to over 60 people in the last couple of weeks, kind of explained what we're doing. Love the idea, love the idea. We're even thinking of possibly working with the city to maybe changing our hours, opening up at 6:00 in the morning. I know we can't serve liquor until 9:00, but opening up at 6:00 in the morning and offering coffee and sandwiches to help get out of food fight, you know what I mean? We've talked to a lot of people that walk by and said, "It would be great, we can park here, walk, get our cup of coffee, go to the train." I know people have concerns, but if they've been into any one of these establishments, it's not a crazy place. It's a very nice, relaxing atmosphere. My wife and I plan on putting a big investment with the city, we're hoping that you'll work with us. Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Well, I think-
I have some com, please.
Well, I have a couple of comments as well. I think, first of all, we're dealing with hypothetical, I mean, I commend you for wanting to expand the building at some point in time and become a restaurant, but that's unknown. I mean, you don't know if that's going to happen or not, so it's a very hypothetical situation, as I understand it. And I certainly agree with the people that have been at the, at the meeting, and I would have to defer back to one of the commissioners' comments that he was simply finding against your plan because it didn't meet the findings of fact of basically items one and two. Being in the healthcare industry, my primary thing that I have an issue with this is says as findings of fact, this will, this will not, under the circumstances of a particular case, be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, or general welfare of persons residing or working in the vicinity, or be injurious to property value or improvement in the vicinity. I think that gaming has an effect on people, that we don't know the people and the type of people. We can say we do, but in reality, we don't know who's spending this money. Can they afford to? Maybe it's all millionaires that go there. I would hope so, but I don't think it is. And so, in that basis, I have some real concerns about what you do with people who have gambling addictions and can do nothing about it. And you put something right on every street corner, and Bartlett is doing that, and I got to applaud our community development director, Jim Plazinski, at the, for correcting one of the Plan Commissioners for not knowing that we have not condoned all these businesses coming in. I've been very adamant about looking for ways to stop this, so thank you, Jim, for informing one of the Plan Commissioners about what we really do, or what we're really trying to do. But I really have some issues with the finding of fact, I have some issues with the actual people that have concerns about it in the community, and if it was a restaurant on someplace different, I might be, I might be for it, but I just think it's the wrong place for what you're trying to accomplish.
And it's, anyone's right to try to have a business in town, but it's my own personal belief, it's not something that the city needs. And so, I've been adamant of voting against all those that have come into town, actually, so I think it's, I think it's an issue that's, the problem I see with the gambling part of things, which is primarily what this is, we use restaurant very liberally in this situation. And when someone has an alcoholic problem and the bartender says, "Well, you've had too much, we're going to stop you," but what will you do if you have a gambling, a gambler that comes in and has a gambling problem? You're going to tell them to read the sign up that says, "Call 1-800-ADDITION," and, and that's what they're going to do. All of our employees were culture, uh, heard our strength last time, how they handle it, how we're helping, of course. The company that supplies the machines offers us to take all employees to enforce the help of them.
Well, it's my only comments, so I-
I have a question.
Give us a sec.
Where, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm finished.
Okay. Where do you see your market niche in light of the fact that we have so many other establishments in town?
Um, as far as our market niche is targeting women that would like to be able to come have a nice relaxing place, cup of coffee in the morning, to train people, a place where people can come and be relaxed.
That's not what I was asking. What is your market niche? We're, you're targeting people that want to come in and sit down, have a quiet place, and do a little gambling. That's everybody else's market niche. Is there anything different about your approach?
Just that we're going to be an upper class, nice place to be. Like I said, our ultimate goal is hopefully to open the restaurant. If the medical center doesn't stay, we'll open up the restaurant. But we want to get our foot in the door in order to purchase the property.
Well, I, it is my opinion, and respectfully, that you don't know whether you're a gambling establishment or a restaurant, and I have a problem with that. I would, I, I do have a question of staff. The only thing that we're considering here is the special uses, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I have a couple of questions that I'd like to ask you also, or also some comments. You know, we've all sat here, and, you know, this decision that we're making on this this evening is very critical in this gentleman's life, and, you know, the one thing that we didn't do is, we're trying to do something with the downtown area, we're trying to do something to improve the traffic flow downtown, we're trying to do something to have more focus in the downtown area. And we sat here a couple of meetings ago, and we denied the business owners downtown the opportunity of having the TIFT. I too feel like trustee Cameron, and I've said this publicly at the Plan Commission meeting, that the gambling, gambling is here, you know, there's nothing we can do about that. We've asked Mr. Maras to take a look at how we can restrict the gambling, how we can seclude it, maybe, you know, have certain distances. I always thought we could do distances or something like that, and to no avail, it's not happening, and it can't happen at this point in time. I also know that there's a couple of court cases that are ongoing now that may give us the opportunity of doing that. So the dilemma here is, do we take a look and deny the downtown, before I answer that, as far as the noise that you're going to create, as far as the type of people that'll be in there? You know, I've visited all these gambling establishments socially, I mean, just to see what was happening, to make observations, and I don't think that's a threat. And I have seen so many times when something new comes before our commissions, the Plan Commission specifically, and you are correct, people are afraid of change, and they don't want it in my backyard. And that's understandable, because they're frightened, they're afraid, they have, they're comfortable in their lifestyle the way it is, and they don't want anything to disrupt that. So as far as the gambling, if it's not allowed here, if we vote against that, and the alcohol consumption, which if, if we deny that, the, somebody that's involved in that type of activity, they're going to find someplace to go. It may not be here, but they'll go to one of the other establishments, or one of the other bars that we have in the area, and it'll continue. It's not my responsibility as a trustee to supervise these people. My responsibility is to do what I believe is right for the residents and the village of Bartlett, and I don't think that denying this for those reasons is fair. Uh-
But we're-
I, I also have a great deal of respect for the Plan Commission, having served there for so many years, and, and specifically what they, that their recommendation of not being approval. What, what I'm caught up on is the fact that you have five gaming stations and four chairs, and we're talking about, what, 700 plus square feet, give or take?
600 inside, I think.
Right. So I know that, by the way, I wanted to compliment you on your business plan. I think you spent a great deal of time and effort putting that together, and I bet it cost you a couple bucks to do that, that didn't come for free. But the problem I'm having is, is that why, once you want to put a second washroom in there, you can obviously get more tables in there. You're talking about five stations, and you're talking about four seats, that's nine, nine people. And when I looked up at your startup cost, you've got a startup, startup cost $35,000. And, you know, I'm just concerned, I'm confused by that. I don't think that you could start up that business for $35,000. You know, part of me is saying, you know, if you want to invest $35,000, go for it, you know, and if, and if it fails, you know, you haven't had any risk. And I also would like to see something occur in that, in that, in that building that's been vacant for so long. But I'd like to hear some other comments before I really have, before I have to make a decision on this, on, on what we feel. I also have a great deal on staff, because their recommendations were for approval. The Plan Commission, the members that have served on that, they've been on that committee for a good number of years, and they've seen many, many plans come in, and they absolutely have some serious objections about what you want to do down there. I, done for, I'm done for now.
I would reiterate again that the only thing that, the two things that we're addressing here is a liquor license and outdoor seating. Correct me if I'm wrong, we're, we are not considering whether a gambling establishment should go in this.
Vote is on the special use for the liquor and the outdoor seating.
Right.
They need the special use, they need the liquor license to obtain the video gambling license from the state, but our, our-
Oh, I'm sorry, I understand now.
Yeah.
That's why he's asking, you know, if, if he doesn't get the liquor license, that he won't open up. I mean, that, but our job is just on those special uses. We don't regulate video gambling other than, under the state law, which requires the liquor license.
Okay, I get it.
We have our business license, video gaming license.
Well, let me ask this, is there, do you foresee any, if this board were to recommend favorably the petitioner's request, do we foresee any potential issue with the liquor license?
I have an issue with the size of the place.
I'm sorry?
I have an issue with the size of this establishment. I read the information note a few times. It's half the size of the other places that we've approved. I, I find it really difficult to believe that a business owner, if 10 people walked into their place asking for 10 martinis, wouldn't serve them 10 martinis, and then you'd have 10 people standing around drinking martinis. That would be really an uncomfortable situation. I could see that happening come, for people coming off the train.
Not necessarily. Most people, believe it or not, most people that come off the train don't-
You mentioned martinis in your thing, that's why I-
Most people don't stop at a bar after they get off the train.
Yeah.
If you remember when Lucky Jack's was open, not very many people visit establishments, they're so tired from being on the train. We've talked to people on the train-
Did it for two years, so I get it.
They don't want to stop, they want to go home. This is more for people that come in later on in the afternoon or during-
Hold on just one second.
Sorry, sir.
That's not our, that's not duck and co-
Oh, shit.
All right, we, we are pausing, our-
We'll return to the basement.
The room down there, clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Erns?
Here.
Cameron?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Daaney?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. I believe we are in the middle of discussion, I was making some comments based on the size of your location, proposed location, and what we've passed in, with other similar establishments. Any other comments for this gentleman before we take a straw poll?
I, I still have a couple of questions. Have you given consideration of putting another washroom in there?
We have, we would like to, it's just that we're afraid that there wouldn't be enough room. Putting a second bathroom, I don't know if you can bring up that chart again, would pretty much take up where that bathroom is now, all the way to the end.
Jim, can you show us that?
Take where the bathroom is and where it says bathroom and kitchen, that wall, and bring it straight down, it's going to take up all that space. Now I'd have to move forward. We could, I mean, if that's what's the only affecting factor, is that I need to put a second bathroom in, it is a large expense, I'm willing to make that expense, I think it was $30,000 to add the second bathroom, because they pretty much have to tear up everything, but if that's what's holding it up, I'd be more than happy to do that. It's just with the space that's there, it was very tight fit.
Well, let me ask, let me ask, okay, let's say that you're going to have the restaurant, you know, you keep talking about the restaurant, restaurant. Can they serve food with only a single washroom?
Our employees are men and all patrons and employees, but allow us one bathroom. I think that's why you need somebody showing that nine plus one employee-
Got it.
That's allowed.
Okay. Because conceivably, if you did have a second washroom, there would be room, there, there could be more seats in there. Though even though, even though it's only 680 square feet, you still could put more tables in there. Okay.
Anybody else?
I, I think your biggest enemy is the limitation on, on the size of the floor plan, obviously. The economic necessity to go with the video gaming materially limits the number of, of other patrons that you can serve. So as I was thinking through this, and I looked at the seats, I thought, okay, well, you've got five people at the video poker machines, and you have four people at tables, and at some point, from a zoning perspective, you're, you're going to have to decide, I think, whether you're a bistro or you're a video gaming establishment. And for me, that's the hardest thing to kind of get my, my mind around. Am I, are you asking me to vote for a bistro or a video gaming establishment? I, I understand that you need that revenue stream, but you're going to have to decide, and I think that the floor plan has to follow that decision. So right now, just looking at the floor plan, it looks like a video gambling establishment to me.
Our, our ultimate goal, like I explained earlier, we're trying to open our restaurant. Due to, there's not a whole lot of options in Bartlett where it is, I mean, if, if there was something in industrial park, that's a really nice area to order, I've been by it, I'd love to open up there. The issue is, is there's no really good, we're hoping that we, if we purchase the building and Alexium Brothers doesn't renew, that'll be our restaurant, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
The bistro can stay as a gaming, or we can incorporate it in, or we can leave it as a coffee shop, we want options. The issue here is you guys turned down the TIFT, we're willing to make an investment in the city, we're willing to come in, do some changes, but I, I don't want to make that kind of investment, and you guys sit and say, "No," and then now I'm out a million dollars. You know what I mean? I buy in the building, and then all of a sudden, everyone's like, "Nope, nope, we can only have a hot dog stand." Well, I'm not going to make a million dollars doing a hot dog stand, you know what I mean? So I'm hoping that I can work with the city, and I know it's small, but we can start small and hopefully develop with the city, and you guys understand that we do have, offer good food. The convection ovens that we're putting in there are amazing, you can, you'd be surprised what you can cook in them, you can cook steaks, fish, everything. I know it sounds silly, but the, the quality of food that comes out is amazing. We're, if you're asking about the niche, yes, the niche right now is gaming, but we want to showcase our food. Our ultimate goal is to be a restaurant, it's not big enough to be a restaurant. So we are coming in as a small bistro with gaming to pay the bills, to hopefully take over the whole building. Does that answer your question?
I think so, I think so. And, and I think, Mr. President, you suggested a straw poll.
Yep.
And before we do that, just to clarify, Jim, or actually, this is a Brian question, because Plan Commission's had a negative recommendation, are we triggering the supermajority?
It's good, give me one second here, and I will answer that.
Because that's my recollection.
While you're looking for that, one other comment that I would make, just regarding the, the comments that were made at the plan meeting. There were a lot of really interesting comments and a lot of concerned citizens regarding what should be in this area. And I'll, I'll remind everybody that I've been around long enough where there was a bakery in that area, there was, you know, different businesses in that area that did not survive, because nobody supported them. So it's, it's tricky when you go to find businesses that are willing to come in, and you try to pick and choose which ones you get a, you get a, give a shot at surviving. I'd love to have a bakery there, but we had a beautiful bakery down there and just wasn't patronized.
Was that originally the food basket or something like that?
Right, there was a little small grocery store down there as well, and with a butcher.
Where they would sell on credit?
Pardon?
They would sell on credit?
Yes.
You could run a tab there.
Yes, it did.
How, how long has that been vacant?
Barely short time, it was a station cleaner- It was a station cleaners, probably a year, maybe, something like that, not, not very long. It had been a cleaners for quite a while.
Yeah, was that a drop-off facility?
Yeah.
All right, there was no function, there was no plant.
Right.
I was going to say, if there had been, you probably wouldn't be buying that building. But you're very passionate about this, I can see the desire, and I know you put a lot of work and effort into it, but-
The voting requirement in answer to trustee Ranky's requirement is four trustees is required to pass an ordinance to grant the special use when there's been a negative recommendation from the Plan Commission. So, it's the favorable vote of the majority of trustees then holding office. The mayor does not count, even to break a party in that situation.
Ryan, they've, it's, they did not make a negative recommendation, they didn't pass the positive recommendation.
Well, it's the same thing.
It's the same thing.
Well, double negative.
They didn't, they didn't go that negative route, so.
It doesn't, non-positive triggers that same voting requirement.
And they're done that.
Yeah. I saw that, by the way, but yeah.
Okay.
Nice.
Whatever happens, don't give up on Bartlett.
Yeah, yeah, I mean-
We aren't.
Seriously, we appreciate your effort in, in trying to establish a business and we all know how difficult that is. Good. You've had a long time here, let's go.
One more thing, sorry. I applaud your goals and determination. I'm not a gambler, I'm an eater. I'm more interested in the restaurant because that little strip down there is filled with a couple of restaurants that are jam-packed 24 hours a day. So, to reiterate what was already said, I hope you don't give up on us because if you are going to open up a restaurant, I think you'd do very well down there. Thank you.
So, then we'll move this matter on to the Village Board for a final vote.
Do we want to straw poll it to that?
I think we have some people in the audience that wanted to make a comment.
Do we have a number of people that want to speak?
Same things that are in here, probably.
Did you speak at the Plan Commission?
Yeah. If there's something new, can I suggest if there's something new that you guys have came across since the Plan Commission, we'd love to hear that. As we've read this many times. Aaronah?
We have ones.
Okay.
My name is Marlon Schilling, I live at 111 South Hickory Avenue. And I wasn't here the last time my wife represented the household. And I'm definitely disturbed by the fact of having a gaming establishment that comes across as Daniella's Bistro, when in fact, as I believe it was shared up there, it's really a gaming establishment. The other things that I'm concerned about is, I've been there for 45 years. And sooner or later, I'm going to move out and a young family might want to move in. We're starting to get some new people in the neighborhood. And if they have children, I would assume that there would be a possibility that they look at the surrounding area to see what was conducive to an environment for children. The other thing that I'm concerned about is that how the bistro would affect the medical facility that is next door, if they have outdoor seating. That's one of the things. In their plan, the bistro had listed three competitive gaming facilities, Stella's, Betty's, and Shelby's. But it's my impression that there are six restaurants in Bartlett that already have gaming facilities. And the petitioner owns four facilities in Rosemont and in Shiller Park. My concern is, what do the trustees and the board of this community want to have Bartlett known as? Another Shiller Park? Another Rosemont? And I'm not saying anything negative, but, you know, this is my personal opinion. The applicants, as I said, they own four establishments in Rosemont and Shiller Park. Both communities were well-known for the gaming, for the gaming industry. And then I'll close with, is this the type of community that we want in Bartlett? Is there a plan to limit the number of gaming facilities in Bartlett? If not, I think that's something that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
That's the problem that we have, is we can't-
I can tell you, we are working on figuring that out legally.
I don't think he has any, someone else, I don't own a food establishment.
Okay.
I'm sure we're-
Okay.
Anyone else like to speak? Well, since we're going to have a bunch of people step up, it looks like we're going to have, I'm going to ask everybody if you'd kindly try to keep your comments to three minutes. There's no buzzer. So, it's just more of the honor system and just so that everybody has the opportunity to be heard. So, with that, and if you can avoid repeating yourself, that is helpful. So, thank you very much and why don't we get started?
Joan Place, 128 South Hickory Avenue. We have lived in Bartlett since 1970. And at this point, when we see what is going to be put in here, oh, if Jim could go back to that other photo, that's the interior. And I look at the size of the kitchen. I've been a dietitian for over 30 years and I'm very familiar with kitchens, having worked in hospital settings. And I look at the size of the kitchen and I recall when we were here for the Plan Commission meeting, they mentioned to us that they would be having home-prepared food that they would be making and bringing over to be served here. Now, I'm not aware of sanitation being allowed to be inspected in someone's home. But you'd better not be preparing food and bringing it from your home and serving it at this bistro. Because you have no way of knowing what has happened to that food, where it's prepared and how it is transported. And I look at the size of this kitchen and I think, how much actual food gets prepared at any of these places? Isn't it basically all just nuked? Got from someplace else and nuked at the facilities? So, that's one of my questions, having to do with the sanitation of this.
Thank you.
My name is Naharun Kishaba. I'm a pharmacist, I live over in 271 Shawnee Circle. If this goes, if you guys deny this, I plan on opening a pharmacy at this location. I've already talked to the owner, I know he's been working months, but trying to get this approved, but there's already plans for me to have a pharmacy, an independent, which would compound. We don't have any compounded pharmacies in town, so it'd be, you know, an independent pharmacy, which is perfect size and it's right next to the medical facility. So, I think that would be a better option. Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? Thank you.
So, you want to straw poll or you want to send it right to the board?
Well, I think legally, we have to go to the Village Board regardless. If you want to do a straw poll to give the petitioner some guidance as to what the future may hold.
Yeah, I think it would be wise if, if maybe you tried to figure out, I think it's brilliant what trustee Ranky said, are you a bistro or are you a gaming facility? If it's strictly five stations for a gaming facility and two seats to eat at, I think that is a pretty clear indication as to what you're trying to do. Now, I understand the practicalities of keeping a business open, but as trustee Ranky said, drop a couple of those gaming stations, create some more tables, you might have a better shot. That's my opinion.
I concur with that. You know, the way the plan is presented to us this evening, what I look up, look at up there in the other gaming sta-, or stations that have, places that I've been to, I just don't, I, I would not vote for this, this evening, the way it's presented. The plan needs modifications, it needs to be redesigned. And I just can't, I wouldn't vote for the, the way it's presented this evening, I'm sorry. Now, keep in mind that I am, I'm trying to do everything that I possibly can to help businesses in the downtown area. I want the downtown area to succeed, be successful. And I would welcome this, or a concept like this, I could support this if this plan, if the, the floor plan were different than what we see right now. I'm not, couldn't support it this evening.
So, will we begin the straw poll?
Chairman.
Yeah, absolutely, let's, let's do the straw poll.
I thought we were.
You just started it, Ray.
I did.
Yeah.
That's a no.
That's a no.
No, the way it's presented, no. Just to give the petitioner an indication as to whether it would pass.
No.
Absolutely not. I disagree with trustee Danny when we say that there's, it's not our responsibilities aboard to try to mandate what people do with their free time and everything else, but it is our responsibilities aboard to give guidance to the city and to show what kind of businesses and what kind of city we want this to become. There's references that, you know, that some people made about it being Pottersville and, and I don't want to see Bartlett become Pottersville.
So, I think it's safe to say, and again, thank you for putting all this work into this, I think it's safe to say that, you know, it's up to you if you want to go back and try to reconfigure this design. And I would strongly suggest that you speak to some of the folks that are really up in arms and they live closely to there. And I don't know, maybe they're more apt. A few of them said this evening, if it was a restaurant, if it's actually a bistro, if I felt like they were going to serve food there for more than, you know, if I bring two other couples, I can't even sit down type of an establishment, I think that would be my recommendation. But we certainly don't want to drag this out for you any longer. Okay? Very good.
All right, so the second item on committee this evening is case number 15-11, the Starbucks special use to serve beer and wine. Jim?
Are they putting in video gaming machines also?
This is, no, they're not.
I know, I know.
This is the second time you have seen the request by Starbucks Coffee Holding Company. It has also gone to the Plan Commission at the same meeting as Daniella's. And they received the positive recommendation for their beer and wine service for their liquor license. And they're here prior to going on to the board for a final vote. Again, the public hearing had some concerns expressed by at least one resident who showed up, but the staff recommended approval. Starbucks has gone through the expense of expanding for the evening hours and they are both here representing Starbucks, the manager and their attorney.
Any questions?
I think it would be great to have wine and at a Starbucks.
Especially if you're not a coffee drinker.
Yeah, which-
Well, I think, I think Starbucks-
My wife is very thrilled about this. She hasn't drank coffee in her whole life and we might actually get to go to Starbucks together now.
I, I think you've demonstrated that through your commitment to the community, that you're more than able to handle a liquor license, so certainly I support this. My one question to use, actually a follow-up, because I recall that we, we attempted to, for lack of a better term, strong-arm you during the last board meeting regarding a Starbucks location in downtown Bartlett. And I will say this, I did read in the newspaper that the city of Naperville voted against your ability to serve liquor at one of their locations. I think I read that in the Herald. And, you know, again, downtown Bartlett, right across the street. Invitation's open. Certainly this approval is not conditioned to bond your, you know, except, but it's definitely something we want to talk about.
Acknowledge the strong-arm tactic.
Isn't it?
I will say, just to clarify the record, that Naperville has not actually formally denied the application. They've tabled that question for six months because they want to see how Starbucks performs in other jurisdictions like Bartlett. So, we do hope that we have that opportunity so that we can show Naperville perhaps the air of their ways.
They can move all their tables to Bartlett.
Yes, indeed. With regard to any future plans for expansion, that is at least two levels above my pay grade. I do know that their real estate personnel are actively scouting out locations throughout this area. And there has been much discussion about Bartlett and other, and other nearby municipalities. I don't know if you have any more specific information than that.
I don't have any information on it. The only thing I, we are expanding stores and we have pretty aggressive real estate people in the market. This is my market and I like having more stores than less stores, so I will take that recommendation for sure.
Great, great, great to hear.
As far as distribution, you guys get, who, is it major person that supplies the beer and the wine for your locations or do you go local? How does that work?
Oh, yes, then please.
There's three separate distributors that we work with. I, off the top of my head, I don't know the names of them. They're pretty large, though.
Just wondering if the local people would get a crack at that.
It's through, it's through Seattle, it is-
Oh, maybe not then.
Contracts, but I-
Well, I can clarify just a little bit, I knew that with regard to the product selection, they do try to favor locally-produced beers, but because of the state's laws regarding distribution, they have to go through the state's three-tier system and that generally is dominated by a few larger players. So, while they do try to emphasize locally-produced products, it's not always possible to partner up with the smaller, locally-owned distribution outfits.
Thank you.
Any other-
Moving on for a vote?
Any other, yeah, let's move it on for a vote.
Yep.
Sure.
Thank you for coming in, too.
Thank you. Mr. President, that's all we have for-
Thank you, Chairman Ranky.
Thanks.
Next item we have on our agenda is under Finance and Golf for Chairman Danny.
On June 2, 2015, the Village Board reviewed the services provided by the DuPage Mayor's and the Managers Conference and the Northwest Municipal Conference. The Village Board also asked for more specific information about the requirements for participation in the DuPage River Salt Creek Work Group and other programs provided by the conferences. As of yet, we have not renewed our membership in either one of the conferences for the 2015-16 fiscal year. And this is for discussion. Paula, do you have anything that you could add to this?
Just that the other item that came up when you last looked at this was the Employee Assistance Program that we also do through the Northwest Municipal Conference. We wanted to see if DuPage Managers offered such a program and they do not. And that was one of the questions that the board raised.
So, in your recommendations, these are both pretty essential. Both of them are pretty essential, they're not mutually exclusive.
They, they are not, and when we looked at what we did, we, we found that we kind of cherry-picked the best programs from both of them and utilized them fairly equally.
Anyone else? Can we move this along then for a vote?
Sure.
We just move it along and vote to renew our contracts with these folks, I think. I mean, it was painful the very first day I started when I started looking at all these organizations. I asked Paula to put all of these organizations on a piece of paper and what they do for us and there's a long list of them. And I tried to wean it down. And being in two counties, being spread out, unfortunately, it's, it's an ongoing thing that we're going to deal with. And we do benefit, even tonight, we, DuPage Mayor's and Managers, we probably benefited significantly because of being members of that particular organization, so it's kind of like taking medicine, but. Is that it? Chairman Danny?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, that-
Okay, moving right along, we have a license and ordinance, Chairman Aaron.
Thank you. This is a fairly simple housekeeping thing, I think. What we're trying to do is, according to Mr. Perez's memorandum, is to exclude the board from having to sit in on any kind of appeal hearings. And having served on an appeal hearing for another massage establishment, I can tell you, it's a good idea. So, if anybody wants to belabor this, please do. Not belabor.
Not belabor, discussion.
Sign with me.
Sign with me.
I think our village attorney put a lot of time into this already and we'll have a better product coming out the other end, so.
Okay. That's it.
All right, we will now adjourn to executive session. And then following, directly following executive session to discuss collective negotiation matters pursuant to Section 2(c)(2) of the Open Meetings Act. And directly following that, we'll be adjourning the committee of the whole meeting.